Welcome to the October 29th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. I want to turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Young for our prayer and have a Boy Scout[142.47][142.47]introduced here in a minute to do our pledge.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
From troop 398, we have Boy Scout Austin Wilks who's here. He's at the St. Mark's Methodist Church and he's working on his citizenship and the community merit badge. His dad is Bill Wilks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That's a...I know a hard word. How many badges have you gotten since you've...you've...what? You said you've been a Boy Scout for three months now? Is that right? Five months? And you've gotten how many badges? Great job. His dad was telling me that the scoutmaster is telling him to slow down because he's going to be an Eagle Scout by the time he's 13. Would I ask that you keep the McManahan family in your prayer? He's a firefighter here at Murfreesboro and lost his son at the age of 24 to cancer. So, really want to ask that you keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Ceremonial items, we don't have any tonight except to say that this meeting is going to be the meeting of Ms. McGannon. So, she is...this is Ms. McGannon's last council meeting after many, many years. So, after every motion, we may let her call the roll, Ms. Wright. That's okay.
You've got some leadership Rutherford people here.
I'm looking to do new things, but that's not one of them.
Well...
It's not an option.
I may have a surprise at the end for you, Ms. McGannon. We do have some Leadership Rutherford...or not recipients, Leadership Rutherford attendees here tonight. We have one barbecue judge who's with the Leadership Rutherford people tonight. So, if y'all wouldn't mind standing, we'd appreciate it. Glad y'all are here. And you picked a great night because it's a pretty short agenda. Also want to introduce Craig Tyndall, who is here. His first day was Monday, so he has been able to get four days under the tutelage of Ms. McGannon so far. So, we're excited to have you here, Craig. We'll do something more formal here soon. Okay, you have the consent agenda in front of you and you have three items.
Mayor, press him for item B.
Okay, item B will be deferred. So, you have two items in front of you. Sorry, Mr. Crumley.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Mr. Lelance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll move to third readings and consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15049, amending Chapter 12, Fire Prevention, Section 1230 regarding prohibited sales, use, and possession of fireworks.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Mr. Lelance?
We decide it.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Ms. Wright, I need to ask a favor. We had discussed that we were going to talk and discuss a couple more things on this for next week.
I would move...it's not appropriate to...
Can I withdraw my second?
Let me withdraw my motion completely.
Then I move to defer this till next week.
Perfect.
Second.
Ms. Wright, we have a motion of second for defer.
Mr. Lelance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. I hope we consider tightening those days up. That's my issue, is tightening the days up where you can purchase fireworks. You see what I'm coming from?
Yes, a draft of an ordinance to that effect has already been prepared by my office.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. McGannon. I apologize for letting it go that far.
No, you're fine.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 150Z50 to zone an area at 4536 Veterans Parkway as commercial fringe, CF District simultaneous with annexation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Mr. Lelance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 150Z51 to zone an area at 4526 Veterans Parkway as highway commercial, CH District simultaneous with annexation 2015-415.
Sum of seven.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Mr. Lelance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet? Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 150Z52 to rezone an area along Veterans Parkway to highway commercial.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Lelance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
We'll move into new business and we'll consider recommendations of the building and codes director regarding a new electrical inspector position.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, I'd like to recommend that we create another position for electrical inspector. If you'll notice, the packet of information we gave you in the second half of...second six months of 2011, we collected approximately $98,000 in electrical permit fees. However, in the last six months of this year, beginning in September, we collected $196,000 electrical permit fees, so it's more than doubled. However, since then, in 2011, we had two full-time electrical inspectors and a part-time. 2012, we made that part-time electrical inspector full-time. So, we're now at three full-time electrical inspectors, but our staffing hasn't kept up with the fees coming in. We're struggling to make same-day inspections and we would like to keep that going, so I feel we need another electrical inspector to make that happen. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
These are one of the positions in the city that actually generate more revenue than there is expense, so this is one that pays for itself.
Mayor, move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Mr. Lelance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Well, now, consider recommendations in environmental engineer.
Mayor, everyone in the council, for those of you I haven't met yet, my name is Jay Bradley. I'll be presenting for Mr. Hulston this evening. We have four items for your consideration, all pertaining to the fueling facility at 620 West Main Street. The first item is item A, acceptance of bids for the construction of improvements on this site, which includes replacing the canopy and fuel dispensers. In February of this year, the canopy was removed due to recurring episodes of storm damage, and on October 6th of this year, we accepted bids with the lowest responsive bidder being Cobb Environmental and Technical Services with a base bid of $447,886. There were also several add alternates in the bid package. Staff felt that item number five, which is an upgrade to the Fuel Master, should be included with this project at a cost of $43,900, bringing the total for this contract to $458,786. This project is paid roughly 50/50 from the risk management pool and 2012 TML loan. Staff would like to recommend approval of the construction contract and acceptance of the bids of Cobb Environmental and Technical Services in the amount of $458,786. Be glad to answer any questions, and Mr. Ryan Maloney with Griggs and Maloney is also in the audience.
Jay, you got all your i's dotted and p's crossed?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hulston's been working with Griggs and Maloney since 2013 on this particular site, and one of the following items refers to that contract that was approved by council in 2013.
So, Ms. McGannon, we're going to handle the bids and then move into the funding authorization. Do those all separately?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion from the council or any question?
I move for approval, the bids for construction.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Mr. Lelance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young? Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Let me say something. Jay, it's good to have you back in town.
Well, thank you. I've been in town, I've just been hiding for years.
I know you've been in town, but Mr. Bradley worked for the city for several years and then worked for a private firm, and now he's back looking for the city, so we're glad to have you back.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you. The second item tonight is item B in your package. It's the funding authorization for the site improvements. The contract that we just discussed was for the canopy and the fuel dispensers. The engineer had a engineer's estimate for the site improvements on this site at $300,000. It included improved entrances, some additional parking, some improved circulation, sightlights, and some additional fencing. We anticipate performing this work with street division personnel using the existing concrete storm drainage contract, the existing paving contract, and the existing traffic signal and maintenance contract, all paid out of the 2012 TML loan. Staff recommends funding, authorizing the funding of $300,000 to complete the site work at the West Main as a companion project to the contract just approved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. Lelance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
The third item is item C, which is a design proposal amendment one with Griggs and Maloney. As I just mentioned, on March 23rd of 2013, city council approved a design contract to make improvements at the site in the amount of $27,500. Once the design got underway, we realized there were additional items that we needed to address to upgrade the system to meet some regulatory standards, with some additional permitting that needed to be done, as well as the canopy. So, the scope of services increased from what the original contract was on the part of Griggs and Maloney. This additional scope of services was based on the additional items I just mentioned, as well as the additive alternates that were placed in the bid package. These additional services, along with construction phase assistance from Griggs and Maloney, would be an additional $73,700, bringing the total contract to $101,200. This would be paid per the previous council improvement of one-third risk management and two-thirds 2012 TML loan.
They are good firm. I move for approval. Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. Lelance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
And the last item is item D, which is amendment two to the city's bulk fuel contract. The city approved a contract with DND Oil Company on July 1st of 2013 to provide fuel to several of the city's fueling facilities. Due to the improvements at the West Main site, we spoke with DND Oil and determined two additional sites in town that could be used, the one being off Bridge Avenue close to the West Main site. The other is on Memorial Boulevard next to the Reeves-Sane Building. It's anticipated we'll use those two additional sites for two months during the construction, and then once, obviously, once the construction on the West Main site's complete, then we would go back to using that site. Each department that uses or outside agency that uses the fueling facility have approved budgets for fueling, and no additional funding authorization is anticipated with this amendment. Staff recommends approval of the amendment of the bulk fuel subject to final approval of city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Mr. Lelance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Jay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to have you back. Okay, well, now, consider for adoption Resolution 15R39 honoring city attorney Susan Emory McGannon upon her retirement on November 1st, 2019. Fifteen, I'm sorry, fifteen. As many of y'all know, Ms. McGannon announced her retirement several months ago, and so we have all been dreading this day, but yet it still has come. And so, we have a resolution tonight that I'm going to read for the record, so we all will officially vote on that. So, we have Resolution 15R39 honoring city attorney Susan Emory McGannon upon her retirement on November 1st, 2015. Whereas city attorney Susan Emory McGannon has served the city of Murfreesboro as Assistant City Attorney from 1992 to 2001, and as city attorney from 2001 to present, and whereas following her graduation from Kenyon College and Vanderbilt University School of Law, Susan McGannon became an accomplished and gifted attorney in her private legal practice in Nashville, and achieved many distinguished honors, including founding and leading the Lawyers Association for Women, and becoming a two-time president of the Tennessee Municipal Attorneys Association. And whereas she continued that tradition of leadership while in Murfreesboro by being awarded the President's Award for the Tennessee Bar Association, the Kenyon College's Distinguished Service Award, and the Tennessee Supreme Court Service Award, serving on the Tennessee Supreme Court's Board of Professional Responsibility, serving on the Board of Directors of the International Municipal Lawyers Association, IMLA, earning IMLA's Joseph I. Mulligan Distinguished Public Service Award in 2008, and four times achieving designation as an IMLA Local Government Fellow, a distinction given to recognized municipal attorneys as proficient and competent in the practice of municipal law. She served as president of the Rutherford County-Kanon County Bar Association, serving on the Tennessee Bar Association's Board of Governors, and being one of the creators of its leadership law program, and becoming a life member of the Sixth Circuit Judicial Conference. And whereas during her tenure in Murfreesboro, Susan has also given her time and resources to her community and peers by serving on the Board of Directors of the United Way of Rutherford County, serving on the Board of Directors of Kenyon College, serving on the National Council of Vanderbilt University School of Law, serving as co-president of the Legal Women Voters of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County, as well as an officer of the Legal Women Voters of Tennessee, serving as a secretary of the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, and graduating from Leadership Rutherford. And whereas Susan McGannon has authored numerous published articles and speeches, and whereas while these many professional and community activities were important to Susan McGannon, she always placed the interests of the city of Murfreesboro and its citizens, businesses, institutions, and government first and foremost with her time, dedication, and intellect. And whereas Susan McGannon has served the city council, the boards of the commissions of the city, the city manager's office, and employees of the city through periods of growth and times of challenge and difficulty with the highest degree of professionalism, proficiency, ethics, integrity, leadership, and dedication. And whereas Susan McGannon has led the legal department excellently, ethically, efficiently, and enjoyably, and whereas the city recognizes city attorney Susan McGannon's notable and significant contributions to the city of Murfreesboro and the legal profession. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee as follows. Section one, the city of Murfreesboro hereby honors and expresses its profound appreciation to Susan Emory McGannon. The people acknowledge her many contributions and selfless devotion to the city during her tenure with the legal department. Section two, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage and adoption the public welfare and the welfare of the city requiring it.
You want to read that again? She's asked me if you'd read that again.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I'll just say, Susan, it's been great and I appreciate you and respect you a great deal. Susan, I know you've touched each and every one of us up here on the council. I think the first meeting that you have when you come to the city is one with the legal department where they tell us what we cannot do. And I know we all appreciate that because that has served us many, many times, and I've reflected back on that meeting several times as to when someone has asked me to do something, I've said, Susan says I can't. So, more than anything, I want to say thank you for all you've done for our city, but also for me personally. Thank you.
Ms. McGannon, you are a wise and patient council. You have cultured us and nurtured us in the business of government, and I appreciate it professionally and I appreciate it personally.
So much of what the public sees is decently and in order, and thankfully, you've helped to keep the function of government decent and in order. I want to thank you for your mind, but I can't tell you how much we appreciate your heart. You are caring, competent, professional, and we've been blessed to have you as our city attorney.
Susan, you know, we have a personal relationship, and I appreciate you, you know. Thank you for keeping me in line.
And by proxy, I have a text message for Madeline that says, "Thank you so much for everything you've done for her as well."
Susan, the legacy you leave is not by ordinances and resolutions, it's by the people that you've worked with, because at the end of the day, when all this that we're doing up here is gone, the relationships we've made are the best. And we're told, you know, to build your foundation, build it on firm ground, and you have left the foundation of not only your legal department, but this city firm. And if I had to describe you, you've been a rock for this city. And so, I would tell you, this is not a day that you need to be upset. This is a day that you can be thankful and look back at the legacy that you've left for this city in many years after we're gone. You'll see Susan Emory McGannon's signature on the documents in this city, and there will be people who will look back and will know exactly what you've done, and we are appreciative for what you've done for this city and the residents. Your work has been tireless and it has not gone unnoticed.
The opportunity to serve is one that the council gave me more than 14 years ago and have kept me on. Each Thursday, you've had an option to change your mind about that, and I truly value the fact that you haven't, and you've given me a chance to work with our great city employees and department heads. And a special acknowledgement to the former members of the Assistance Club that Rob Lyons and Melissa and I formed when we were the number twos. And I was the first to step up, and they followed, and, you know, I don't know what our assistants are doing now. I don't know if they're for you or not. But I think we only had one council meeting where we were all three filling in, but we all took pride in that and knew it was a sign of things to come, and it's very exciting to see all...well, at this time of looking back at what's changed and what have been part of, to have confidence that this is good to be.
Well, I told you this when we had your ceremony earlier that had hundreds of people who were here to give you your moment in the sun, because Susan has always been the type that she's not been the one on the front line to say, "I want credit." She's just not how you've done things, and this afternoon was your time in the sun, and I'll tell you the same thing publicly, is that you've been a blessing to this city. And there's not a day that will go by that we will not be thankful for what you've done. So, I would ask the council, if it's possible, instead of calling roll, that we have this resolution passed by acclamation.
Did you have to motion for that?
Call the roll. All those in favor?
And I told them, I'm still going to call you at the house.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. McGannon.
I've got some parking tickets.
You have one beer permit in front of you, Ms. Wright?
We have a convenience store that's a new location at 3162 South Church. They have met our background requirements through our background check, but we are still waiting for the building codes inspections to be completed, so we are requesting permission to issue this permit once they finalize all their codes inspections.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. Lelance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
You have a couple of board and commission appointments that you looked at last week. We have some reappointments. Carl Pease and Michael McCann are the Board of Electrical Examiners, and then we also have...well, actually, that's the only two that we have.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. Lelance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Any business to come before the city council from staff or council members?
Mayor Ben's, I've been referred to as the Great Pumpkin more than once this afternoon. I just want to remind the public that...
Did I say that out loud?
Yes, you did. But let's remind the public that for the next couple nights, we're going to have several children and stuff out in our roadways, and I know it's getting dark fairly early now, so just keep a watchful eye for those ghouls and goblins out there.
And let me make an announcement about downtown. A trick-or-treat on the square is tomorrow, so there'll be lots of folks downtown, so if you want an efficient way to get candy for your kids, come around the square from 3:00 to 6:00 tomorrow, and I think you'll have a great time. Nice place to see everybody's costume.
I'm going to go ahead and admit before the pictures start circulating around to you guys that I'm dressing up...my little three-year-old's dressing up as a crocodile, and my wife has bought me these really shorts. and my wife has bought me these really short shorts and I'm dressing up as the crocodile hunter. I just want to go ahead and tell people that before it comes out. I'm sure they will be circulating, so I'm going to go ahead and preemptively say that. Ms. McGannon, if you wouldn't mind coming to the chair, please, I would appreciate it. I don't know if I have the authority to do this, but I'm going to do it anyway.
You can do anything you want, Mayor.
I'm going to let you call us to adjourn tonight.
Are you really, really sure you don't have anything else to say? I call this meeting adjourned.